It's five thirty, one, so we're gonna call this meeting to order and the first item up is the pledge of allegiance led by Ms. Barbara Board Williams.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, our mission statement will be read tonight by Michael Dubois.
Beaufort County schools provide quality educational programs and services to ensure student academic and vocational success.
Thank you. Did we have any public comments? No, no public comment, so move to, move over to the approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Do we have anything that needs to be changed on, added?
We got a thing added.
Are we good?
Make sure you F five.
Okay, so we should be good.
We're F five?
You said F five.
Just F five and you'll have the latest version. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to this agenda? No, okay. And minutes, you should have two sets of minutes, a closed session and a regular from June twenty eighth. Hopefully you've had a chance to look over that.
Move approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on that. There's no other questions. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to this? Okay. And that carries us to the no action portion of our meeting. And first up will be save the pool. And who's going to make the...
Matt's gonna present. And what we wanted to do is to have, you all have an opportunity to hear the proposal from Matt again, and then we're gonna be talking about some capital for the sixteen, seventeen year moving forward. We're not taking any action tonight, but we felt like it would be good to have this on the table for discussion as we talk about capital budget stuff for our next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Phillips. Thank you for allowing us to come today and speak with you. Again, my name's Matt Rochambeau. I work with the city of Washington. I'm the finance director. Christie Robinson, she's our director of parks and recreation. So the pool, the aquatic center at our sports complex has been a, I guess it's been a funding issue for the city for a number of years. Don't generate enough revenue through the membership to cover the cost of operating the facility. It actually takes a subsidy out of the property taxes and sales taxes each year of about three hundred thousand dollars to operate it. Beyond that, the pool is, what, fifteen, eighteen years old?
Sixteen.
Sixteen years old, and it has a huge dehumidification unit that's housed in the mezzanine or the attic of the pool. And it's at the end of its useful life, and that's a very expensive unit. Initial estimates were about three hundred thousand dollars. Council did approve the operating portion of the pool's budget for next year, but they would not fund the capital portion. Christie and the pool committee came up with an idea that they would host and have a fundraiser for the balance of this calendar year, and if they could raise half of the money needed for the dehumidifier, they proposed, and asked council if they would fund the remaining half. And council did agree to that. We've been at it since the first of June, and I'm pleased to report that Christie and her team have raised over twenty thousand dollars in just six weeks. So they had a golf tournament. I'm sure you've seen the ads in the paper, had a golf tournament that was quite successful. We're gonna have another one in October. They had pizza end night where all the tips plus ten or twenty percent of the meals went to the campaign. They're having a car wash this Saturday from eight to noon at front of the Verizon. And we're selling little commemorative tiles, various kinds of things, as well as taking donations. But we appeared before your board, I think it was in late May or early June, and made a request, and I know it's unusual, and I understand the tight budget that you're under, and I've seen with the county as allocated to you guys, and I know it's extremely tough. But, and we made a request of twenty-five thousand dollars, but I do have some good news. We gotten, we visited Roanoke Rapids, who has a facility almost identical to ours, and they just replaced their dehumidification unit in the last six months. And we went out for, and got two more quotes, and we're able to get the price down to a little less than half of what we thought it was gonna be. So it's gonna be about a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So initially, we had requested for you to consider twenty-five thousand, but based on the revised estimate, we would like to respectfully request half of that amount, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. If you can find a way in your budget or your fund balance to appropriate that to us, we certainly would appreciate it, because, you know, we're doing all we can do to raise, and I think it would, it would, it would help us get the rest of the money from our council, too, if we could get some port from the community, and the community stepped up so far. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We're happy to host the school swim team to come practice there. We love for them to come there. They did a great job, and we're all proud of them to win the states this past year, and we'd like for that to continue to happen, so. Any questions?
Any questions?
None related to that, Matt. Do we, do we have a firm number on what the cost would be for our teams to use the facility for practice?
Yes, in years past, and I don't know how long this has been in place, but it was eighteen hundred dollars a year for the swim teams. And then we, and it hadn't been adjusted. So we did look at the number of hours it is being used, and we're recommending that it increase to, I think it's seven thousand, six hundred dollars. It's plus or minus a hundred dollars, Dr. Phillips, but we're recommending that it increased to that, and that's, it costs so much per hour to operate the pool, and that's just to cover the cost of operating the pool.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, that carries into a capital budget for sixteen, seventeen from Don, not Fitz.
And Stan is here, too. I just wanted to walk you through, again, this is a no action item, but we feel like we need to look at what we had originally, that we commit, that we presented to the commissioners, and then take a look at what we've got in terms of our allocation from the commissioners, what we need to do moving forward. We need to go ahead and get a capital budget approved so that we can start some work, and we want to show you some recommendations. And when you add it all up, it comes up to more than what we've been allotted by the commissioners, but the whole point of that was to let you see what some options are that we could pick and choose from. If you click on the first link that's there, it's a PDF file, and it is the original document that has the capital request items in it, and you'll see shaded in yellow are all the things that make up the safety and security piece, and also the system-wide technology. And those are important to consider, because when I have to get to the next file, I just want you to see kind of what we're walking through. I've also got a hard copy. If you prefer to have a hard copy and look at it, you certainly can do that in addition to what's on the screen that you've got. But when you look at the first yellow shaded, we said safety and security, most of these are things that we wanted to do to create that catchment or containment area in each school so that visitors on campus wouldn't be able to have access to the building or the campus without going through an area and then being buzzed in or allowed to enter. There are a couple of other things on here that include, one's a new intercom system, and there are two fencing projects that we've talked about, but I just wanted you to be aware of those, and you can see those as you go through it. On that second document, just kind of working from the top down, system-wide safety and security totals four hundred and sixty-six thousand nine twenty. That includes three hundred thousand dollars in new camera installation. We said that camera installation project, we felt like to do everything we needed, would be about nine hundred thousand. We wanted to do it over a three-year period of time. That's an area that we could scale back a little bit, if we, if you felt like we needed to, to do some other things, but that would, in a three-year period, would give us what we need to do with camera system. System-wide technology from Mark Malek, four hundred grand. I don't feel like we can cut in that area, because it impacts everything that we do in the classrooms and across the board. When you add those two together, it comes up to eight hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty. When you take the amount allotted by the commissioners of nine hundred and ninety thousand six thirty-nine, and you do the math, that leaves us with a balance to spend on all of the rest of the capital items, a hundred and twenty-three thousand seven nineteen. So thinking about that, and you look at what our projects are, Stan and I and Russ have gone through and looked at what was on the original list to try to highlight things that we felt like needed to be done, that weren't the huge ticket items. And as you look at that list, you'll see a good number of them are six thousand, three thousand. What is missing from that list, that I'm afraid is gonna come back to bite us down the road, is we've gotten into a good pattern of replacing activity buses, but an activity bus costs somewhere between ninety-one thousand and ninety-two thousand dollars. So if we add that activity bus to the list, which is certainly up to you all with what we want to do, it's gonna greatly cut the spendable amount that we've got there. We'll go from about a hundred and twenty-three thousand to, you know, just a little bit over thirty, maybe thirty-two thousand dollars that we would have to spend. Talked to Lynn this morning, and without putting a firm number on, and she was quick to say we've got several projects that aren't completed yet, so we don't know what the final closeout in our fund balance of being able to spend, but we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and eighty thousand, we hope, and that may fluctuate a little bit as we have completed projects come in. And we have a couple more that we hope would come in a little bit under budget, which would help us down the road. But until they're considered completed, then Lynn doesn't put that back in, in terms of a savings or a cost overrun for us to do the balancing with that. But on the sheet that you have, whether you're looking on your computer or the hard copy in front of you, I tried to put in bold, the first section under the word balance is considerations from the original capital list. These were just things that Stan and I picked out, and we could have picked out any number of things. Asphalt repair, there were, I think, two hundred and some thousand dollars of asphalt projects, and Stan feels like if we do the repairs at the right place, we can buy ourselves a year or two on asphalt work. So there was a twenty thousand dollar tab that we put there for system-wide. And then just to explain what else is on that sheet, the next section says items on hold for the Eastern Elementary enclosure. Remember, we had to hold that three hundred grand, so we set these projects aside. It could be that you want to go back and pick some of these projects up. It's not gonna be an and, do this and, we're gonna have to do swapping them out. It's gonna be or, right? And then you've got projects that came in with bids over the budget in the fifteen, sixteen school year, and we have an opportunity to look at those if you feel like there's something on there that absolutely has to be done. And then we had one project that was questioned in the way that it was spec, and that was the canopy at Northside High School. And remember, we had two bids, and one of those was only an eight-foot wide canopy. That may be something we want to completely respec and bid out again. So really, what I'm giving you is kind of the snapshot of what Stan and I've looked at. It doesn't mean that there's not a project on here that you might want to include that we didn't include, but we felt like we had to have a working place for you to start from. And then what I'd like to do is come back at our meeting in August with the recommendation that really would come out to nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. But a big portion of that's gonna be taken away because of safety, security, and technology. And then the question's gonna be, do we do an activity bus? And if we do that, then it changes the dynamic of a lot of this, because we have a lot less spendable money, a balance to work from for the remaining projects.
So I wanted to throw it out there just for any feedback, and again, we're not looking for action tonight on it.
Well, if we would be able, pending, when we, you know, and meet in August, whatever, and approve some of this, are these pretty concrete figures on the safety and security bids, Stan? Do you feel like there will be any wiggle room at all in those bids?
If we can get them, we can bid these projects together for these storefronts in this thing, yes, ma'am, we could save some money by purchasing in bulk. You know, if we do each one of them individually and it goes out for every project, then these numbers are pretty secure numbers.
Are some of these items doable in-house?
Yes, ma'am, some of the work just figured us doing it, yes.
I would think so. So it's possible, not necessarily probable, but it's possible, but that there would be some wiggle room at the end, so that some of these items that are down here on hold could be moved up, right?
Yes, and pending on whether Eastern's project comes in under budget as we hoped, then we'll free up some money that we were currently holding.
And are you gonna address that next, or can you address that now?
It's on the agenda coming up.
Okay, okay.
The other, the other two items, I think, need to be on the mix, and Stan and I talked about it, and I failed to put it on here. The cafeteria wall at Southside High School that Stan's talked to you about, where we've got the wood problem, that's a project that's gonna need to be, we're gonna have to deal with that, or we're gonna have major problems. We're looking at about ten thousand dollars. That's not included here. We'd have to figure out how to add that on. And then the project that we had at Ed Tech with the doors with the, is it a lentil? Is that what it's called?
The lentil and the overhead canopy.
That'll be something that we'll come back to you with.
That go into the cafeteria?
Yes, ma'am.
The old cafeteria.
And I have an architect coming tomorrow to look at that project.
So we'll have some more information, but this is not a comprehensive list. I mean, what we, again, we took it out of the master list in the presentation that we made to the commissioners, but you all may feel very strongly about different projects, but I felt like we had to give you something to work from and to react to, and I'd love to take that feedback, not tonight, you haven't had a chance to look at it, but between now and the time we meet in November, in August, and put together some type of a proposal for recommendation.
But pretty much you can take attachment two, compare it to attachment one, and see if there's anything on attachment one that you would rather be, you'd rather have on attachment two than what they suggested. I mean, that's how simple it is. But the only wiggle room, really, safety and security, the three hundred thousand for cameras, I mean, that's the only, I call it, I think it's the only wiggle room there, you wanting to take, go two hundred thousand and put a hundred thousand. We're two buses, we already need two buses. That was what was on the original request, and we skinnyed that down to one.
Yes, we had one wrecked and then replacing it with a reger.
Yep, that's right. So somewhere down the road for too long, we're gonna be looking at buying two, whether we want to or not. So you might want to just see if that's important to everybody. Just think about it, you got time to the next meeting, right, Don?
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, before we start doing a whole lot of wiggle room...
Yeah.
I don't want us to get caught in a crossfire with the commissioners, if that's what we have been told, that's what we're gonna spend the money for. I hope we go back and tell them that we had to re-group, because we...
You're a hundred percent right.
We're communicating good with them. I don't want us to, I want us to be upfront with them, and they watch the TV.
That catchment area, I think, is the biggest piece, and if we still do part of the, what we'd be doing was we would roll out the capital, the camera project a little bit slower than do it over three years, but all the other pieces inside with the storefronts and that would be, and our understanding was that we'd be able to use the money that way, as long as we said that we were gonna ensure that those projects were completed.
Right. Is this, the cameras, are they outright cost? We own them, is that?
Correct.
Have we done any research on leasing?
Well, that's what we were into before in leasing and the type, the whole concept they were under in proprietary, and they were the only ones able to work on. That's what you run into when you run into a lease, a lot of times, is proprietary and not being able to interact. These, all these belong to us, we can move them, use them as we need to.
I just wondered if there's a company out there that leases you the equipment, and as far as being proprietary, it would be, it would be ours to...
I can't really say, Russ and Mark Malek and his crew have all been in the meetings and that, I've kind of stayed out of that side of it, so I can't honestly answer.
I've sat in on a couple, and those were questions that we had. One of our concerns right now, we're paying a heavy fee for a service contract on some of the equipment that we've got, and once we get out of that, we feel like we won't be tying that money in a service contract, we'll have it more in hardware.
I'm just concerned with technology, how it...
Constantly changes.
Constantly changes, and sometimes it's, you know, instead of buying things like that to purchase, and then you, you can't really resell the stuff, because it's out of, out of its technological use, so.
Let's have Russ talk about that, because he's spent quite a bit of time looking at the camera pieces.
So if you're leasing, they'll update it for you.
Yeah. But back to Max's point, because he's a hundred percent right. We don't want to change that four sixty-six unless they know we changed it.
That's right.
But I know for a fact that this, that, what he's talking about, those storefronts and things, that's what they're not gonna wiggle on, and I don't want to wiggle on.
No, no, no.
We don't want to change that at all.
And by wiggle room, I mean, I didn't mean not do them, I meant are these, are these concrete figures?
But we would only change that with their okay on that.
Right.
Okay. So take a look at these for the next meeting and see if you think there's a project ought to be on here, that's not on here, or the other way around, so. Anything else, Don?
Not for them.
Okay. Let's see here. I think that would, well, sorry, yeah, it does. Goes to Stan on capital update. So we're talking capital, just a little different, just a quick version of all the current projects. And you know how to go through each one.
No, so there's only...
Just explain your highlights to us, how it's highlighted. Does he have a copy of it highlighted?
Miss Lisa's.
Oh, okay. I see a lot of yellows, and then these different colors. Yellow is finished. So pretty much anything at the top that's not coded in, I know we haven't worked on it, or I'm trying to read it, actually.
The only updates that I currently have is, we have started on the Northside and the Northeast project. They have completed four rooms upstairs, and they will complete the rest of Northside High School this coming week, if materials arrive as scheduled, which will be this Friday. They did start on the Northeast Media Center. They have all the carpet up, and we'll start installation and hope to be finished by next week, too. Glass Tech has, I don't know if they completed, they were scheduled to complete the Southside Kooplas today. I don't know if the rain affected them, if they actually got through before the rains came in or not, but that's the updates, and the barge units are waiting on a PO, so.
And I can read through, and everybody else can, too. I just wanted to see this document, because you can take a quick look at it, tell what projects they've done, projects we're working on, or if there's a project that we haven't tackled yet. And this is from last year, so I thought it'd be important to know what we haven't done before we start talking about another year. The one thing I want to ask you is Eastern Elementary. Where exactly, I'm trying to read this, where are we at on those enclosures? Because I know we got to get that stuff...
We have pre-bid tomorrow at two PM. Meeting starts at my office at ten-ten Pennsylvania Avenue, and we'll go over to the construction project, and then the bid is the twenty-eighth at two PM. We'll be receiving the bids. We're running this simultaneously with DPI's approval. We asked for expedited approval on the plans, they have them in hands. Everything, we're pushing it along, and we really won't know, do we get the bids in on what phase of the project? We met with Ms. Dana, Dr. Phillips, and I met with Ms. Dana this past Wednesday, I think it was, to try to work on a schedule and a, how we can do it with school, because it's gonna interact into the school year, it's gonna...
We're not gonna have them done by the school year again?
There's no way the total project can be completed by the school year.
Okay, are we saying the bids will be back to twenty-eight? What are we saying?
Yes, we will have bids on the twenty-eighth.
We had bids back to twenty-eight. So once we approve those, then they can go right on the work, hopefully.
And they've already started, they've already been in contact with our attorney to get the contracts sitting in place, we're just basically fill in the dots and have it all ready, ready to be moved, so. Yes, sir.
They're looking at the jackhammer, I think, the concrete?
Getting all the demo, everything out of the way.
So we don't really know how long it'll take once they start, though.
That's right. Once whoever has awarded the bid, and then they'll give us a construction estimated project date.
And as I look, kids, when they start tearing up concrete, they'll find something else.
We do not have any plans.
Sorry, that's the way it works, it seems like with that project.
We do not have any plans for that school, and there's a lot of things that have been changed over the years and a lot of unknown, so.
Stan?
Yes, ma'am.
The, I wrote out the, look at the building the other day, the road that's coming in from two sixty-four, is that gonna be an accessible road that's coming to that, to the multiple purpose building?
No, ma'am.
It's not?
No, ma'am, the road is a fire access lane around from, I forgot the name of the street, it's around where the apartments are.
Okay.
Cutting down through that low ground is actually wet land, and it's not there. It was old service road through there years ago, and they used it to start the construction, but now they've had to cover it. Deener made us cover that back up and plant grass on it.
Oh, okay, so, oh, so I was riding on the grass?
Yes, ma'am.
She cut through there.
You probably need to close it off.
Well, there is a yellow ribbon, there's a yellow ribbon and some posts up on the far ring and there's up by the tree.
I came in from the, from two sixty-four, but I went out to work the project.
Yes, ma'am, if you follow the dirt road around, there is a lane that says Fire Lane, and it is marked as Fire Lane, and Fire Lane.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because I was wondering if... Do you think a piece of rope and a ribbon's gonna stop Ms. Booth? No, not if I really want to see it.
Or a lot of other things, either.
So, so, the enclosures are not gonna be done by the time school starts, and they will be working on them as school starts, is that what you're saying? When did DPI finally get back with us? You said, we've been waiting for them to get back.
No, we wasn't waiting for DPI, we were waiting on a signed contract here that we finally got. That was the holdup, the contract here with MHA. Yes, ma'am, with us.
And through, and through, and through Tharantina Smith trying to get the wording worked out and something in hand that we could actually sign. We probably lost two and a half weeks or three weeks, maybe.
Probably three weeks.
Trying to get that taken care of.
Legality stuff, so. Now DPI was aware, they were the ones that recommended us hire an architectural firm to do the project, so they are aware, and they're gonna do an expedited turnaround. They said they would get as quick as they could for any changes, and any changes will have to be addressed in a change order if they missed anything, if MHA has missed anything far as fire address, and they say they've got all their bases covered, they've looked at it every way possible, and they, and there's some doors that got to be upgraded, because the doors are not ready.
I just think it's important they let the public know, because I get asked that a lot, and they don't understand why it's been...
Well, Ms. Dana's gonna make them, everybody aware during her parents' meeting, she's gonna request that the parents come to a preschool meeting without the kids, so they can sit down and explain and work on routes of entry and egress entries, exits and stuff, this type of stuff. So Ms. Dana actually has the plans in her office where she's working on that.
Structurally, one of the concerns we had was that door going out from the, they don't feel like there's a structural issue with the building there. So which we were afraid that was gonna be a great deal of work.
Want it settled?
Yeah, they're gonna, they felt like it was hit in some way, so they're gonna work on that piece of block and some support.
Because it's non-weight bearing, the two architectural engineers being looked at it and said, there's no structural, there is some structural damage, but it feels that's where the door was hit by something, not by a building load.
Most of our projects from last year then have been addressed, the most of them.
We still have one out, I think, that we re-bid, the Chaco Wendy Middle School Cafeteria. Think that one's out, because we didn't get any bids from it before, so we sent that out again.
Considering...
The ceiling, the washable ceiling.
Considering what the sixteen, seventeen capital's gonna look like, we'll be able to catch up real quick, right, Don? Okay, well, this, it'll give me time to look over this, but this is the document I wanted, anyway, so.
The two drainage projects, the one at Northeast and Snowden that you're doing in-house?
Yes, sir.
Are they, are they done?
No, sir, we've obtained the materials, we're, we're working on them, we're trying to get them done. We're working our way around each campus, and we were down at Northeast and started on the walking trail wall, that's underway, so that's one part of it, was getting around there to get it put in, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I think you just take time to look at it. Appreciate it. Student transfer report.
This is something that Lisa and I created, excuse me, a couple of years ago, that we have shown you through, over a period of time, and we haven't brought it back to you for a while, but we wanted to show you what we, what things look like right now. And what I'm gonna recommend is in the superintendent update every month, that we just put this in here updated, so if you want to take a look at it and see how things have changed from month to month, you can do that. It looks confusing when you first take a look at it, but everything on the left-hand side, reading up and down, would be students coming from that particular school, and then you read across the top, left to right, that will be going to that school. So if you look at Bath being the first school there, if you read that, that will be students that come from Bath that go to the other schools, and you see the numbers that are listed there. The anomaly that we've got in here, and I don't know if it is something that is an indication that there's a little bit of a change going on, but we've got about twenty-five students that are not accounted for, that have normally attended Pamlico County, and that are not accounted for that have normally attended Pamlico County and they've not done the request. And I hope they come back to Beaufort County. And it could be that we've just not gotten those requests in for some reason, but we want to keep an eye on this. It kind of gives you an idea of trends, some things you know already are going to jump off the page and it's going to reinforce what you're aware of. But it's interesting to look at the number of students from out of county that come into Beaufort as well.
You mean they're just there with that permission?
No, they've, we're waiting to get the paperwork. We don't have it turned in yet. That's right. So, you can see from within the county, the kind of movement, and you can see the county, the movement from our county to others or from other counties inside Beaufort, but that is a snapshot of everything that we've got. Obviously, it doesn't include charter schools and does not include private school, church school related stuff. This is just the public school transfer forms that we get. And if a student's not doing it legally, we don't have documentation of that. But this is all based on the forms that are turned in to our office.
I'm just making a couple of notes while I'm trying to read over here.
It's 47 kids.
Yeah, the ones that jump out at me is S.W. Snowden.
Forty-seven.
That's 47 kids. That would make a huge difference in that school. What, about 25%? Close to it?
Yeah, and you're losing eight Southside students to Pamlico.
Yeah, I had to look at that. Yeah, you're right. But anyway, this, this gives you a quick look at it.
Is this students that are just, just transferring this year or is this students that have transferred in the past and just had to get approved every, every year?
Because you've got 16, 17 on here. That was a question I was going to have, too.
All the transfers have to be done annually. So, whenever the paperwork comes in, we've got them. The other thing that jumps off to me is the fact that we've got 23 students from Bath that go to Northeast.
I was wondering about that.
Part of that may be the attendance line. Some of it has to do with family, people that teach there. This includes also faculty members and staff members and things like that that we allow to have their students with them. So, you know, I would encourage you to look at it. If there's something that you want to know more about, we'll, we'll take a look at it. But this is just to give you a snapshot of what the movement looks like within and around the county.
And that's why I was asking, at Northside, you've got 16 students going from Northside to Washington. That's, that's not 16 new students this year are going. That's 16, okay.
Many of those are continued in and some of those may have, I mean, they've been there for, for possibly this may be the fourth year of them doing it. Yeah.
Okay. Nothing much to say. I mean, these are numbers. Some of it is kind of baffling, but they are what they are. Anybody have any questions about this? I don't think so. Okay, let's move on. Well, trees. Okay.
Back in 2010, a group called the Pine Needles Garden Club of Washington met with our board and I think at the time we had a building and grounds group that met. And they wanted to do a tree planting project at P.S. Jones and John Small. And they've sent something to me and have asked that the money that was in their fund be given to us and that they no longer be responsible for the trees that were planted. So, I really don't know what there is that we can do other than to say we've got trees now that we'll be responsible for. I think we have to find out landscaping wise, they've been there all along, so they've been cutting around those. But in terms of making sure that they're alive and healthy, that's one reason why we're reluctant to put things on campus, just because of the work that's involved with that. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. They've officially made that request to us and I wanted to give it to you. And I'm not sure there's any action to take. I don't think we can accept the trees that are on campus now. And we don't want to cut them down, so we'll, we'll look after them, but I wanted you to be aware of that.
Don't we need to know why they can't take care of them? Because that problem could come up again.
It says, "We planted 38 live oaks and 12 crepe myrtles with the help of Pamlico Turf and Landscaping and the club members on March 17, 2012. During the day of planting, sessions were held to teach the students about the trees and how and why they were planted. As of March 2015, they were all thriving. We replaced one of the live oaks twice on the John Small Playground area." And then we had an individual who also came after the last hurricane and staked the trees and has mulched them twice since the planting. They were all doing well with backup funds from the project. We were able to also donate planters and plants to help beautify the entrance to both John Small and P.S. Jones. As of spring 2016, there have been several trees that have died. And the person who's sitting here thinks that it's maybe due to them not being maintained and that fire ants are hurting the health of the trees. And we'd like to turn the maintenance of the trees over to the Beaufort County Schools. So, suggested maintenance would be the mulching and pruning is needed, along with replacing the dead trees. The Pine Needles Garden Club is giving a check in the balance of the learning tree fund of $617.87. And we could give you an update on what we're spending annually. If the mulching part is part of the landscaping contract, Stan might want to look at that, or is it a separate thing that we do? I don't know how far 617 will go in terms of maintaining and looking after the trees. But we like them. They make things look better, but there's also a cost that goes along when we do any planning like that. And that's one of the concerns that we have anytime we put something in the ground to take care of. But we, we want to make sure that they thrive and they, they do well. And we'll use that money the best we can to make sure.
So, I guess they just, the club just went out of business? Or they just stopped?
Dissolved.
Dissolved. Okay.
Went away. No longer.
Oh, okay.
It is. Another one does. It is what it is.
So, I just wanted you to know. Not, not request any action. I don't think there's really any action to take. Okay.
Okay. That moves us, speaking of action, that moves us to action. We have three items here we should be able to make some quick looks at. One is the calendar.
Quick and easy here. The calendar that is presented and you've got a copy as you click on that. One of the state requirements that we have is that teachers are paid 215 days. Now, what I'm getting ready to say has nothing to do with the date of enrollment or attendance dates for students. But if you take a look at the month of June, if you, if you go all the way down to that annual leave day, which is on June the 19th, which has kind of an orange backing on it, if you count up all of the numbers from the first day that teachers come back until that day, it's 216, which is one more than we're required, we're allowed to do by the state. So, to correct what we're proposing, and I want you to see this, even though it doesn't affect students, you had adopted a calendar. What we would do would be to move the annual leave day on the 19th to the 16th, and the 16th would no longer be a work day. It would just be an annual leave day that teachers could take. And that would get us to 215 days. It does not affect the beginning and ending dates of students. Doesn't affect any teacher work days when school's in session. It would just be those last two dates. We lose the 19th and we'd make that annual leave down the 16th.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Anybody got a question? I think it's pretty straightforward. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that? It's about as painless as it can be. And the next one should be also custodial contract, supplies, custodial supplies contract. Make sure we're not doing custodians.
We sent out a RFP for a full-service custodial service contract. It was bid number 57. The bids were opened and received by administration and recorded. The low bidder was Savile Inc. of Hillsborough, North Carolina, and the bid amount was $136,810.8 annually. We would like to seek approval to proceed with checking references. And if everything checks out, we'd like the approval to proceed with signing a contract approved by Ms. Kim Edwards.
Okay. Now, what's the length? I know we don't, we're not doing contracts by year.
Two years with a one-year, two-time extension, max of four years.
So, we're going in for two years. That's not an annual, right?
Yes, sir, two-year contract.
I don't want to do annuals.
I didn't read through word for word the contracts. Did they, I'm sure, I know the specs were out there, but did the contracts come back in pretty much word for word that we're getting the same job for the?
That's what we want to look, Dr. Fitz and I would look through most of it today. Looked at some of it. We want to make sure chemicals are, are the same chemicals. We did ask some questions when they did come around in their pre-bid stuff about waxes and solids and this type of thing. So, we do want to compare it, but also want to check their references, just see how they're working out for other school systems.
Because it's over a $30,000 difference.
Right.
Check them out good.
So, are you, are you asking us to approve the bid or to approve your request to check out the references and?
Request to check out the references is what we need to move forward with.
We'd like to approve the bid, right. Prove the bid based on it coming back.
Yeah.
So, we don't have to revisit it again?
So, we won't have to revisit it unless something pops up that you feel like you have to come back.
And I'm also going to ask Kim to look at the contract. And I think she actually was instrumental in writing the contract with Image Supply. So, I want her to look at it, make sure that there's not a glitch there and approve it, assuming that the reference checks are okay. And on the legal side, the contracts, the way that we'd want it to be written, then we'd be able to move forward.
Because I wouldn't know these chemicals, but it'd be easy to overlook and find that you're getting something inferior. And the way you find that out is when everything starts looking at.
So, I understand if you vote yea on this, we won't hear about it again if it all checks out. This is, this is the deal. This is the contract.
And if you all remember, Savile used to have the contract.
They did.
And.
I wouldn't hear, yeah, prior to.
And we had a big merry-go-round there.
So, we need to check it closely, is what you're saying?
I, I'm just saying, this is very competitive bidding here. This is, these guys know each other very well. So, you know, just make sure you're.
Right, that's.
Every eye, I didn't ever tease cross.
I'll make the motion based off of the references, checking out and the contractual through Kim.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. And if you want to ask a question, now's the time. If not, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed to this?
One question.
Yes, ma'am.
Why would we deal with them again if we had problems with them before?
They just got outbid it. That, the only problems, really. Now, are, now Savile going to do the same thing about the clean school award like Image was doing?
Yes, sir.
They're going to still continue to do, which I think they were doing at first before Image. And we.
Yeah, they're going to do 10 inspections.
I think that's, I think they were, yes, sir.
Well, we've, we've passed it now, anyway. So, you check them out real close. Make sure, between you and Don, make sure everything's the way it should be, well, and Kim, our attorney. So, that's what we hire for.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Field trips.
Two field trips that are listed here, 8771 and 8772. They both involve the FFA camp trip to White Lake. Northside and Washington will be going together on the 8th of August through the 12th. This is an annual event that is beneficial to our students and our students and adults that participate look forward to it. Because they're going together, they'll be sharing transportation. They're also, the female chaperones from Washington will cover the students from Northside. And then there'll be additional adult chaperones that are there. So, this is an annual request. I'd like to seek your approval for this.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by someone over here. Any questions, last questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed to that field trip? Thank you very much.
I'm sure it's a great, great experience.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, A1 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115(c)(321).
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. We're in closed session. Okay, we're back in open session and the first order of business is to approve or not our personnel agenda that was just discussed.
Move approval.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the personnel agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, I have two other items that I need to, to handle this personnel. And I would like to entertain a motion concerning our superintendent.
I make a motion to add an addendum to the employment contract for our superintendent to change revision to terms, date from June 30th, 2019 to extend through June 30th, 2020.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any question about that? If not, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed that?
Free.
Okay. And I would also like to entertain a motion concerning our assistant superintendent.
I would like to make a motion to extend. He knows how long.
I was going to say, I'm not sure why that's funny.
Anybody else?
We'll see you, Mark.
I guess it's, I guess it's.
Rest in my hand.
Anybody else?
I'll do it.
To extend Mark's contract to July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to extend that contract. And I did not twist her arm. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much.
I happily did that.
Okay, that moves us into a calendar for August. I guess that would be Don. Everybody can read it.
The two dates printed there are the board meetings, the work session on the 2nd of August and our monthly board meeting on the 16th. We'll need, we normally do a meeting that day that teachers come back, which I think is the 22nd. Is that right, Mark?
Yes, sir.
We do that in the morning, first thing, a quick breakfast and take care of whatever personnel needs to be done then. So, we need to add that if you all are able to accommodate that schedule.
Why did we stop having the open school day?
We've, expense was one reason, but this year the reason was because the way the school calendar bill was written, we don't have as many teacher work days to be able to work from. And they felt like when we were working on the calendar, they said if we could give that up this year, that they'd be able to use that day to be at school and in the classroom. So, we graciously did that. We're going to do some podcasts and things for the teachers, but I hope the following year we'll be able to go back and do it. It may be something we do on alternating years.
So, you're looking at the 22th, which is a Monday, and we need to do it early like we always do. Now, what's early for these guys? Because early for me is like 6:00 and I know they don't want to meet at 6:00.
Five o'clock, be found.
Yeah, I was going to say, it works for me, too, Matt, but I doubt we get them very big.
In the PM?
We technically allow the people that were, and it shouldn't be that many since we're meeting on August 16.
We, this is the first year since I've been here that we will have a board meeting actually that close.
Right.
The first of the month and the very end of the month.
Right.
But I, I would assume that we'll have some folks on the 22nd, but you're correct. I don't believe it'll be as many.
Won't be as many. And we allow them to show up at their place of employment just based on the approvals.
And will we meet here? Because I know we've done it before at different locations. You'll just meet right here?
Yes.
Okay, what time, guys? Don, when do you need us here?
Can we do eight or 8:30?
I mean, eight's fine with me.
I was just thinking, you probably want to be out into schools as soon as you can that morning, too, don't you?
That's first day of teachers, not students.
I mean, we won't be here.
Okay, well, teachers just come in, yes, 8:00.
We won't be here very long. This will just be a little quick.
8:00 AM on the 22th.
Okay, the 22th, which is Monday, August 22nd at 8:00 AM, and promise you will not be here long.
August.
Just make Randy go to work early.
Okay. And that's all the meetings we need to talk about, right?
Well, we need to do the ribbon cutting for the two structures, the multipurpose room at Eastern and, and the field house at Washington. And trying to find a date that works for everybody is going to be nearly impossible, but I don't, I don't know if there's a date or dates that we could look at that Lisa and I could start working on, trying to get something scheduled. I think we want to do it ahead of the orientation meetings that they have at Eastern Elementary. I know they're doing some things with the football team and the one at Washington, but it'd be nice to go ahead and get that done, get some publicity, pictures taken and then consider it opened and officially taken care of.
Can we do both of them the same day?
I'd like to do both the same day if we could.
Can we do, are we going to think about or looking at doing some kind of a meet and greet for our new principal at Washington High School and just do it all at the same time, is what I was thinking. So, do they have a better time to, than?
Well, they don't want to do the ribbon cutting thing like at a football game one night?
I think they're rather, just because of the use that's going on right now. I have talked to them about it, but they're already using it.
Yeah.
But.
I'd heard that they may want to, you, you mentioned the football team, that they may want to just bring in the team, bring everybody in and do it for the principal, all, everything at one time.
And I haven't talked to the coaches staff, but we can do that.
That would ensure it's cracking.
They're calling at Coach's Clinic this week, so.
Talk with Coach. Would it be possible to do something prior to the work session on August 2nd, since you're going to be around already, anyway? You just maybe do one at, maybe do Eastern at 3:30 and then go to Washington at 4:00 and then come over here at 5:00 or 3:00 and whatever.
Always look to the work.
I'm going to be out of town about the 2nd. So, but don't worry about me if everybody else can, can do it. I've been to the Eastern building and it's impressive.
I guess find out.
I'm just looking at you, but you're another working person.
I, I, I can make arrangements to do that if, if that's what you want to do.
Will you just look at that and get back to us then? So, can we do one of those, what is that, that hold the date kind of thing?
We will.
For August 2nd.
And let's say from, starting at 3:00 if we could do that. I think we could do 3:00 and then get to Washington and be.
Okay, send us what you find out. And that's what we'll do. Anything else on the calendar?
Second.
Okay.
Board member updates?
Oh, I'm sorry.
New hire banquet date.
New hire, the, for the new hires, which we won't have nearly as many as we've had in the past, but we want to have that hospitality extended to them. We did that last year, you may recall, with the pig picking at EdTech. We'd like to do that again. It worked out great location-wise. And our date for that, Mark, is?
August 17.
17th of August.
At 6:00 PM.
That's for Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
So, EdTech, 6:00 PM.
Lisa, you'll be sending all this out, right?
Yeah. What time is that?
That's.
6:00.
6:00.
Oh, we might bump that meeting up on 17:00 then.
Is Ed cooking that pig, too?
No, Ed ain't going to cook that.
Moving just into the month of September, just you have it on your schedules, the 8th of September, that evening, we've got scheduled the Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year banquet at EdTech again like we did last year. September the 8th.
Thursday.
6:00.
September the 8th?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did.
6:00.
But we'll be back together for then, so we'll get plenty of reminders. Okay, anything else? Any board member updates? Superintendent updates?
We've got an invitation here that's on the, that we hand out a hard copy to as well for Terrence Kopp, one of our graduates that we're looking forward to in early August. And then I've got leadership meeting tomorrow with our principals, assistant principals, and our curriculum leaders and trying to get everything set for the return of school for teachers and students. And just a lot, it's a busy time of year for.
That's a semi-formal attire.
Yeah. That's what I just looked at. What are you wearing?
Look at me.
Semi-formal pig pig.
That's what I'm wearing. I pretty much have one, one set of clothes to wear, so that's what I wear.
Semi-something, I want.
I guess things like that come by boat.
Now, you come by boat. It's just however you look when you get off the boat.
I really do. This, where is this going to be? At the SBR?
That's nice. Okay, I can see that, then.
I don't know. I don't think it's necessarily the way I'm semi-formal.
Well, it says on here.
That's what they said, but I didn't hear I said.
Well, I figured they the ones supplying the pigs, so I want to rest the corner.
Not eat no pig.
Okay. Any thing else from anybody? If not?
I'll make a motion with adjournance.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.